This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening. I'd like to call the August 9th, 2018 meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:00 PM. Our first action item is our consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from June? Okay. And next on it is we have the resignation of the following: Tina Tanguey, our business manager; Zoe Madden, our science teacher at North Haven High School; Kayla Bartolomar, grade seven special ed teacher; Ellen Davis, a preschool teacher at the North Haven High School; and this one: The retirement of Dr. Cronin as superintendent of schools at the end of the year. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Assumed.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, then the motion passes. Well, in favor? Sorry, I said it passes. Then because as we have a discussion, I know how Dr. Cronin is, and I want to say so much about his retirement, but I know how he is and he's trying to be very quiet.
Thank you.
I'm hoping for some bile and...
I'm going to say to the faculty, "Welcome to the other side." So I do have to say that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, you can't go!
Motion passes. Our student representatives are not here, so we will move on to that. I just have a question. Does anyone know, did Rachel come pick up her gift? Okay, so I will reach out to her. I know someone who knows her, so I'll reach out to her on that. So my report is very short. Couple of things we have done is Dot Logan and I interviewed a few executive search consultants regarding the search for a superintendent. We have chose one. But with that, what I would like to do is appoint the entire Board of Education as a hiring committee for the superintendent's search. So based on protocol, even though that is what we're given by, we have to vote on that. So may I have a motion to appoint the North Haven Board of Education as a hiring committee to the superintendent's search?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have our search committee, which we chose JE Consultant. Dr. Joseph Errardi is the lead there, and he will be coming to our October and November board meetings to present to the board and to the public. His plan is to work with Joyce to secure dates for focus groups. And then he's also went together with Brashore. So lots of things going on about that, and I'll keep you all posted as we work on that. So thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Report of the standing committees? I'll start with Aces.
Aces, their next meeting is September 12th or 13th, whatever day it is.
Okay.
They only open over the summer.
All right. Curriculum instruction and planning? Okay. Finance and operations?
Finance and operations. So as you're aware, Tina had stepped down, and since she has stepped down, I personally met with Dr. Cronin, Melinda, Cheryl, our staff accountant. We have a new intern, business manager Frank Connolly, and we also went across the street and talked to Ed and just to make sure where our transitions are in regards to our outstanding invoices versus our insurance, so that the transition, as we're in the process of hiring a new business manager, it should be smooth.
Thank you. And also thank you for all the extra time you've been putting into it.
Thank you very much, Brian.
I appreciate it. I'm glad this happened, not during tax season.
I thought the meeting with Ed Spinkowski yesterday was a very good one.
We do have a... I personally told them that I would follow back up with them in two weeks, just to hold everybody accountable, to make sure we're on track, so that the school year doesn't get ahead of us. And we have a lot of bills, and you know, just I want to be on top of things.
Thank you. So I'm going to pass right through the middle school building committee. I can go to the North Haven Education Foundation. If you have anything to add, Bob, to Joe's on vacation.
Yeah, I did not attend the June meeting, the July meeting.
Okay.
If they don't meet in October or August.
Okay. Policy. This is me. We need to work on our policy. Right now, because of Dr. Cronin's retirement, a lot of my focus is on being that, but we will get started on these policies. I'm looking at... This process is going to take a while, but I'm looking at starting on the policies in November timeframe. And I know Dr. Cronin has looked through some of them and see what has been outdated or what needs to be changed, and anything that has a hard date to it, we'll take a look at. PTA council?
We did not meet.
Okay. The ad hoc athletic committee, do you want to give us?
We did meet, yep. So in front of you, I just put another copy of the draft, which I will send to Joyce this weekend. It will officially become a part of our policies. So that's just for your review. Of course, it won't have the date of the draft on it or draft, but just wanted to give that to you. We met last week, talked about a couple of different things. We... Brian came, so Brian and Amanda were both there, so please chime in if there's anything you'd like to add. What we decided was, as far as access to fields, Phil Diana went ahead and bought a lock that will only use keys that cannot be duplicated. So we're going to give keys to coaches, and if anyone else is to get a key, for example, the head of the lacrosse league for North Haven or head of soccer, they have to sign it out and sign it back in when the season is over. And obviously, it'll be stamped on a "Do not duplicate," so this way, not one person can make 50 keys and just hand them out. They will be held in Steve's office, and they'll get signed in and out through his assistant. We talked about signage and the different things that we need on the signs for the fields. There already is a sign... Just excuse me for pulling my phone up, because I have a picture of one of them.
Did you go?
About an hour and a half ago. So the sign that's there from Sprint Turf already talks about shoes that... It says "Molded cleats are athletic shoes only," talks about no sharp objects. As far as food, it says "No gums, sunflower seeds, no sports drinks or liquids other than water," so that's already there. "No pets, bicycles, unapproved vehicles, approved athletic equipment only." So that actually included a lot of different things that we talked about as a committee. It does not say "No trespassing," it does not say "Under camera surveillance." So those are some of the things that the committee discussed possibly adding.
My understanding is that there's signs up on "No trespassing," as out this afternoon.
Did you see the temporary, at least temporary "No trespassing" sign?
Well, an hour and a half, that was the only sign that was there. An hour and a half more time, I said 6:43.
That was... Okay.
Yeah.
Well, they have been ordered, so they should be put up there.
They should have been put up there yesterday. I'll take care of that.
But just so you know that we did talk about that, and I was happy to see that the Sprint Turf sign itself had a lot of the things that we had discussed as a committee, so that was good. We also talked about contracts for the Group Four, which is the group of people, not-for-profit organizations, and the different kinds of things that should be included or suggested to be included on the contract. And then the last thing that I want to share with you...
Randy, can I just say one thing?
Oh, sure.
That contract, even though it's going to the people that are paying for it, also has to be signed by those groups that are not paying for it.
Yes, and I think because there are different groups, the wording might change a little bit.
We'll have it where it's applicable. I have a draft copy here from our attorney.
Okay.
I'll give you the copy, and you and I can take a look at it.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, because some things might apply to one group that don't want to have the...
I just want your group to not think the contract is not going to go to organizations within the town that are using the field, that at this time are not being charged for them.
Right. No, everyone outside of school coaches, because they know, obviously, be part of our school system. But anyone outside of our high school, middle school coaches.
Yep.
The last thing is, if you flip over the draft, and this is not part of the draft, I just did this to save a little bit of paper. Amanda kindly put together kind of a live document here, which was a way for us to cover, or I should say, what's a better word?
Calculate?
No, 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 like not to...
To meet the cost?
Defray.
How many?
Thank you.
Some of the costs.
And some are bringing them. Some of the costs for the use of the turf. So this is something that would be applicable to groups that are for-profit organizations. And again, like I said, this is a live document, so then as you change the numbers that you put in, the amount of money changes. So what she did here was... Do you want to speak to it? Because you created it.
Sure, yeah, I can watch the panel.
Is that okay?
You can't really see, but there are boxes that are shaded in a different color. And this is a Google sheet, so it's shareable. We can create a form, so that it can be accessed by anybody. You'll just enter the weekly hours of play that you're looking for, and the total weeks in your season, how many hours of play that you need lit, and how many hours need to be, and how many weeks those hours would apply for, and it just does some quick calculations. And the purpose of this document is to just figure out exactly what Randy said. How do we defray the hard costs that we know about now, so that we're not incurring additional costs? The purpose of this is not necessarily to make any money off our youth leagues, it's just to help cover our costs.
Exactly. So we're not taking money out of our mortgage funds to cover...
Who is currently doing the schedule for this synthetic field?
So it goes between Steve Blumenthal and Andy Dovacchio in the rec department, and they're constantly in communication with each other.
So I'm thinking that if it's a Google Doc, that's something that we should train them, teach them how to use.
Yeah.
I'm sure they may already know, because then they'll have everything right there.
And we can set it up so that it looks like a form to if outside people want to use it, and we can set up a workflow that'll alert them when somebody submits it. So there are certain things that we can do, just to keep it moving, make sure everybody knows what's going on.
Great, good.
We did talk very quickly about the procedure of how to get it from the schedule to the finance office to get an invoice out and payment in. But of course, with a little bit of transitioning going on, that nothing there is definite yet, but we definitely talked about a couple of different situations, and I spoke with Dr. Cronin about some ideas as well.
Good. You guys are working hard on it. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's do that.
Have you finished, Randy?
Oh, yes.
I've just been sort of dovetailing on your conversation or your presentation. I have... I asked Mr. Diana to chart the temperatures of the field. Now, this is this week during the heat wave. Mr. Blumenthal has maintained records of other times, but I was very interested in this. And really, the information is really quite interesting. So if you look at Monday, August 6th, this past Monday, at 7:00 in the morning, the turf was 72 degrees and the air was 74. At noon, the air was 89 degrees and the turf was 126 degrees.
Does that mean that the air around the turf, or in other words, the turf itself?
I think that was a temperature, the outside temperature.
I think that's, yeah, outside temperature.
Okay, so it's 126 degrees on the field, the temperature. Okay. I didn't know if it was the measurement of the turf itself.
And then you can see 3:00, 136 degrees, and the air was 92. Phil also did the temperature of the natural grass, just as a comparison. I was surprised at how high that was as well. But I know that you were interested in monitoring how that is, and so this is just a little bit of data for you, and we will continue to gather it.
And we also have Steve's data that he's been keeping.
Steve has been keeping data. Unfortunately, he's not vacation.
So is anybody actually using it now?
Yes.
They are?
Hopefully not.
Not through the past 12.
Hopefully not.
Yes.
100 degrees, yeah.
Yes.
Wait, let me just find it. So the school...
Directly now?
No.
Group... So soccer is using the field.
Right, soccer. When you say soccer, you're talking about...
High school soccer. Boys, girls are playing games on the turf at 6, 7 o'clock at night.
At night. That's what we should get a temperature at that time, too.
So they're playing in addition to other groups that are...
If they do that this summer.
Just recently.
Okay, so it has started.
In the past month.
Okay. So Anita, should we think about for our own school sports? Like there was the incident in Stratford that happened in 2015, where the turf was 130 degrees, and the football players were doing crab walks, and they got like the burns on the...
Yeah, I think that was foreign. I remember that. Milford, I remember when.
Oh, Milford, maybe, yeah, that's right. You're right.
Yeah, I did do my research.
I know you did, Anita. But should we think about putting something in place for BOE athletic organizations that just are guardrails around what the turf temperature should be when our folks are using it?
Interesting.
Yeah.
So as you know, at our committee meeting, we already talked about this a little bit, and when Steve contacted Sprint Turf, they will not give a temperature that makes it a playable field. They leave it up to each individual system or organization. So in talking with Dr. Cronin the other day, we do need to come up with some kind of temperature that makes it a playable, non-playable field, but we don't necessarily know how to go about that, except to maybe have Steve contact other schools that have turf fields and see what they do, and maybe get some idea from...
Do you think we should talk to a doctor?
Since we spoke also, I learned that the CIAC has some guidelines.
Oh, do they?
Yes, so we'll reach out to the CIAC. Hopefully, that's accurate information.
May I ask you to speak to a medical doctor or a science doctor? And I ran into this, Amanda, when the synthetic fields were being put down. Depending on what side of the coin they are, you get conflicting information. Now, if we look at this, the grass field was 94 degrees. We don't prohibit people from using the grass at 94 degrees.
Do you think we could talk to medical professionals from both sides of the issue to maybe help us just build some guardrails from like a medical perspective?
I like the idea of going through the CIAC first.
I think that makes sense, too, yeah.
Why don't we do that? We go through the CIAC first. They deal with all the schools in the system. Let's see what they come back with.
Aren't there doctors that are specifically sports doctors?
Yes.
Doing sports stuff?
There are. Thinking about our district doctor. Not the gentleman that has been doing it for a number of years, but there was somebody who was helping last year, another physician.
Why don't we take this? Why don't we get the information from the CIAC and what their guidelines are and rules? And I'm going to assume that they're going to be very fair and...
They may base their stuff on medical...
They most likely do. They probably done the work. When I look at this right now in the summer, if I was to use that field, I would be using it between 7:00 and 11:00 AM.
That's correct.
And I want to get the numbers after 5:00 AM during a heat wave. I also think that we need to look at the numbers that Steve has recorded when we did not have a heat wave.
I think that makes perfect sense. Do you think we're... Do you think we're in a position where we'll be able to offer some guidance to the athletic programs as they come back into session later this month? Or are we going to leave it up to the judgment of the coaches?
Can I go from there?
Yes, of course.
What we're going to do is go to the CIAC and listen to what their guidelines are. Because their guidelines are what they share with the other schools and recommend for the coaches. We'll look what those are and probably go with their recommendation. If they say no one should be on that field above 95 degrees, and that's what they tell people, perhaps that'll be what we follow. I also want to look at, and part of our contract is, that if other organizations should choose to pay for the rental of our fields, we are not liable if they use those fields in the temperature. And I have asked our attorney to prepare a section about that in our facility of use agreement.
Do we need a refund policy if the fields are above what's obligated playoff?
Most likely, they would postpone their program, so...
We talked about offering a credit, but not a refund. So credit for future...
Yeah.
Because that might make things a little bit crazy.
And I just think, you know, we're not the first school to have a field. So there are other schools that we can reach out to, either Steve Ken or others, to get the idea of what do you do when you have a heat wave for four days or five days in a row?
So if you're moving from turf, the backup plan for these teams would be to go to grass. Those grass fields better be in place, because otherwise, it turns into like a rain day. And then it might create issues.
Yeah.
So the other fields have to be lined. The original fields should be still lined.
I think they are, I think.
Soccer now moved from baseball over to this exclusively.
Okay, so then it will. All right, we can talk about that. You have a meeting, we'll figure out the right way to do that.
The CIAC does have it listed on their website, too. And it's, you know, moderate risk is anywhere from 65 degrees to 82 degrees, and high risk is 82 plus.
Okay. And what do they recommend after 82?
Shower.
Are they talking about the... And they're talking about the temperature there?
They're talking about temperature.
Air temperature or turf temperature?
That is unclear. I think we should probably go close a look at this, but maybe talk to somebody there.
And I am interested to see what other towns do as well.
Yeah, because I know the blacktop gets higher than 80 degrees when it's hot out.
Like today, yeah.
But yes, so I'll do what... You know, I'm very pleased that we have been taking the temperatures. I'm very pleased that we've been recording these since the school went out. I'm happy with the way the conversation is going with the athletic ad hoc committee. And I believe that we're going to really have this resolved and make a decision by September. Continue to move forward on that, but we will leave the CIAC.
Sure.
Amanda, in terms of the program, this, which is really good, I think, what you've put together, is there a way that we can set up... I'm trying to think of the easiest way for billing when we're... And ideally, as we've thought about, as I've thought about it and as we've talked about it, it would be wonderful if the billing could be done through the athletic office, because Mr. Blumenthal is making the arrangements. And so at that point, if he could, or his administrative assistant could initiate a bill, you know, that would...
Immediately.
Yeah, immediately. I don't... We can do something on the computer with that?
Oh, absolutely. You betcha. And then people can pay that way, too, so then it kind of cuts back on this back and forth if we can. Just need a Venmo, PayPal, all digital.
Of course.
Yeah, offline. I just learned about Venmo.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, that is so cool. Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the standing committee reports?
Assumed.
Second. Any further discussion?
Dr. Cronin, you should just next week take a look at the CIAC, be yourself or Steve, and double-check what's written on there.
And I'm going to... We will follow up on getting temperatures at 6:00 after, in the evening, and get the information from the CIAC. And then we will look into making sure that the grass fields are prepared in the event that these can be checked. Yeah.
All right, Dr. Cronin, we're to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so I just wanted to inform you of our opening schedule as we are getting extremely close to the start of the new school year. So the year always starts with the commissioners' back-to-school meeting for superintendents, and that is scheduled for next Wednesday, August 15th in Hartford. And that sort of lays out, from the State Department's perspective, where our focus is this year. In the district, we have new teacher orientation scheduled for August 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Three days. And for the second year, two teachers have coordinated this. Carol Ardito, who was a program coordinator, and Amy Alessi, who is a teacher at the high school. Melinda and I did it for a number of years, and it was really well-received last year with Carol and Amy. And they were very willing to do it again this year. So they will present, they will be here presenting on the 21st and the 22nd in the boardroom, and then they will be at the high school on the 23rd, because I have admin council in here on the 23rd. So we're moving forward with that. Now, we will also have a role in that. I mean, I will... Both of us will have something to say throughout. On the 23rd, as I mentioned to you, we have our opening administrative council meeting. And this year, in preparation for the school resource officers, I've asked if the police chief would come to the opening admin council meeting, so that we can have a discussion, you know, with everyone together, so that we, you know, we have a shared understanding about how we're moving forward. The other thing in terms of the school resource officer is that Patrick Sturck at Ridge Road is doing graduate coursework, and he needed to do a project in the district. And Melinda had this brilliant idea.
I volunteered him. Here's your topic.
I know, it's a good thing for Patrick.
And it is for him to put together the rollout for the school resource officers.
Excellent.
For staff, for parents, and for children. And so I've been meeting with him. I met with him again yesterday. He is working very diligently on it.
Doing research.
Yeah, doing research.
Yay!
So... Because my goal would be, to the best and to the maximum extent possible, that there's coherence, especially across the four elementary schools in terms of what the resource officer is doing. I don't want, you know, I don't want them to be individual silos. I think the middle school would be more aligned with what the high school does with theirs. And so that is all moving forward. I've got some more to say about the school resource officer in a minute. On Friday, August 24th, Melinda and I do a student intern orientation. We have 12 interns this year from Quinnipiac at this point. They're hoping to get us more. We have 12. Four for the high school, four for the middle school, and one for each elementary school. And it's not that that was deliberately done. That's where their majors are, the students who are coming out. So you assign them to the level they're being certified in.
And it seems like there's fewer and fewer students, because I oversee the student teachers in the district as well. We have very few, so...
Yeah. And so we do some of the key policies in the district, the mandated reporting, the bullying, that sort of thing. And, you know, we talk with them about the fact that we want this to be as authentic a teaching experience as possible. I don't ever want them, I say this to them, and then I say this again to the admin council, I don't ever want to see them at the copying machine, doing somebody's copies. I don't want to see them making a bulletin board unless it's part of their student teaching. So, you know, it's just good to get together with them. And so we'll meet with them on the 24th. Monday, the 27th is convocation. That starts at 9:00. Everybody is welcome. It's at the high school, 8:00. There are refreshments for people.
I think he's trying to bribe us.
Yeah, I have a convocation at 8:00 that day. I have my own conference center.
Yeah, I know. But I just want you to know you are very welcome. And it goes for probably an hour and a half to two hours in planning your day. Tuesday, we have professional development, and that's all been planned. Melinda may be able to highlight that in her report. And then Wednesday's our first day of school, and as always, our first day of school is a full day, and we are off. September is a very choppy month this year for us. But we will, you know, we will make the best of it. Joyce, can I?
I have it.
Oh, may I have it, please? Thank you. So every year, I know you, it comes up about eighth grade students who are not attending North Haven High School. And so we have some information I just wanted to share with you. There are 20 students, I believe. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22 students. Two of which, that's where I got the 22, have moved out of state. So that leaves us 20 students. And the pattern is what we see every year. And the pattern is what we see every year. There are a group of students that attend Sacred Heart Academy, girls, and then there are a group of students, a group of boys, that go to Notre Dame. And so at Notre Dame, we have one, two, three, four students attending Notre Dame, and we have five students attending Sacred Heart Academy. And then we have a number of students that are going to the technical school, Platt. And we've got students going to Lyman Hall for their Voag program. So that really is, that is really the sum total of where our kids are going. And so I think you're always going to get the Sacred Heart and Notre Dame. I mean, I want to keep as many, the legacy, right? That's right. And I truly hope that over time, we can keep more and more of our students. Really, when you look at it in terms of a percentage, it's a pretty low percentage. But I'd like them all here, and, but, so I just wanted to give you that information, because I know...
Dr. Palmer, what is the incoming freshman class, number-wise?
I, God, I shook all their hands in June.
They're big.
It is big. Yeah, it's about two, for some reason, two fifty-four sticks in my mind.
That's right.
Is it?
Oh, good. Andy's in that one. It was up in here, yeah.
Two pieces of information just for you. We're entering soon teacher negotiations, and so we're going to need board representation on that committee. And we're also, we're also beginning custodial negotiations soon, and we'll need board representation on that committee. The thing I wanted to ask about teacher negotiations was, we had talked about including Board of Finance, a Board of Finance member as an observer to the process. They really can't participate, but they could be an observer to the process. And before I move forward on that, I just wanted to be sure the board is still wanting to move in that direction.
Absolutely, that's important.
Okay. So I will speak with, I'll speak with Mr. Frida next week and see about getting someone. And Jessica Ritter, who is the board's new council in place of Gary Broschu, wondered if, our board meeting is on Thursday, September thirteenth, if she came that night first to meet the board, because she hasn't yet. And the other would be for, before the board meeting, for her to meet with the negotiations committee for just a little bit. And so if that's okay, I'm gonna book her for the thirteenth of September. I'd like the board to meet her. Okay, the acceptable use policies, they were in your packet. There were two acceptable use policies. Are there any questions concerning them? One is for students, and the other is for...
I do have a couple of questions. Do you know what the target age is for the Bring Your Own Device program?
I think that, I believe that it's sixth grade.
Sixth grade, that makes sense, okay.
Yes.
I was curious about the elementary-level folks.
But they have, you know, we've had children bring devices, and it's really frowned upon, because...
Yeah. Do you know if we're installing, I know that we're scanning their devices, but are we installing any remote monitoring software on personal devices?
I believe that we are. Yeah.
And then in the acceptable use policy, it says, like, I will not swear or use impolite language when I'm online, which makes perfect sense. I love that. Who, I read the policy, and it says that there are triggers that are scanning all the network traffic and kind of highlighting what might be considered, but who's monitoring that?
The I T department.
Okay.
So currently, in the department, we have Jen Kosnuski, Chris Bassett, Martha Butterworth now is there as a part of that, and I believe the five techs, so...
So if they were to find some language that is untoward of a North Haven student, or would be considered bullying, would that be escalated to a teacher or to a parent?
It would be, I think that it would begin with the teacher.
Okay.
And then we would follow the discipline policy at some point. I would suspect, in that situation, Amanda, that the parent would be involved from the beginning, that they would be notified.
I think it's a great, like, a really well-thought-out, really well-planned policy. And I wanted to say that each student gets two terabytes of storage space, which I think we've talked about that briefly, but I looked it up, and a terabyte of storage space costs between two and ten dollars a month per person. So over the course of a year, that's two-hundred-and-sixty dollars per student and per teacher, which is a phenomenal amount of savings, like, you know, if we're gonna estimate really, really, at like, half the cost of seventy thousand dollars. So I, like, I was very impressed by this acceptable use policy and just by the work that's being done by the I T department. I think they're doing a phenomenal job.
Oh, very remarkable. Jen Kosnuski is...
She's too sweet.
Yeah, she's wonderful. That's been a gift.
Really good.
Yeah. So if that is okay, we will move forward with the acceptable use policy, because we're going to have parents signing now, and the teachers signing when they come back. You know, I think that, right now, I didn't put it on as a vote.
We should in September.
Yeah, if you, so if you are, if you would be prepared to to vote in September, because the other thing that occurred to me was, we do that first read, second read, so...
This is our first read, and by September will be our second read. And then we'll vote on it in September.
Yes. And then I also included the homework policy that we had, and I know we talked about that last year, and then that got away from me. And I just thought that I'd like to revisit that and have any conversation and see if we can have something that's put together by the time everybody comes back. Were there any questions or concerns about the homework policy?
Sorry.
That's okay.
I do have just one, because the guidelines that we are following say that it's, what is it? Thirty minutes for each year of school? Ten minutes.
Ten minutes for each year of school.
So the only issue I take with that is when we get past ninth grade.
Yeah.
Because students have, you know, extracurricular activities, they have, you know, athletic things that are going on, they have jobs. Is it realistic to expect two hours of homework for a senior, or...
Can anyone who has a senior speak on that?
They have at least that.
At least.
At least, if not more.
Because I think that for the younger grades, it seems very reasonable. It seems like a reasonable progression. But my only concern is that it's a lot in the high school years.
It is a lot.
For many people, they're getting ready for college.
Right.
And your college courses are gonna take up a lot of time.
The thing, Amanda, with the high school also, that I think is important to keep in mind is that they're on block schedules, so students are going to a particular course every other day. So when they get an assignment, they've got two days in which to do it, if it's immediate.
And oftentimes, the second day is lighter than the first day. So like, the first day might be when you have all of your heavy hitters, and then the second day, you might have your band and your unified arts. So sometimes that helps. But there, it is a lot. But I have to say also, that my child, who did all that work, was told that her her coursework was very rigorous, and that's one of the things that made her a desirable candidate for post-secondary education. So although it's, it is a lot, and it does take a lot of time, it takes a lot of dedication, it's what kept our district, the rigor of expectation is what keeps them competitive and sort of puts them in a category of kid that gets some unique opportunities. So that's, that was one thing, that was feedback that we got, because we did ask that question, what, you know, of the, a couple of deans that we spoke with, and they did say that the expectations were high, but they knew the rigor of the curriculum. They do look at that. So although I think it's difficult and it's really challenging, it does prepare them for a rigorous coursework after high school. But I think it also is one of those things that helps them get places. So it's hard, because I can see both sides of it.
That makes sense, though.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, for a lot of students, don't they have a study hall somewhere, once or twice?
But if you're, it depends on where you are.
Take a lot of electives.
Yeah, if you want to take electives, or, for instance, if you, if you take F P S, or if you're doing any of the musical ensembles. Those things sort of are the water that rushes in to fill that study hall. But there are opportunities, if you wanted to, if you wanted to, right.
That's what, eighty-four minutes during the day that, you know, you could.
One of the things that, as I reread the policy, that I just wanted to raise and be sure we're all comfortable with, is the idea of no homework over breaks and vacations.
Right.
Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Because that's going to be a significant change for, particularly the high school. Although that recommendation came from the high school.
Does that include summer?
That summer reading program.
Oh, the summer reading program.
Is there summer reading and summer, well, no, but I mean, even at the high school, they have summer math and summer reading, have to read books and...
We didn't talk about that. Can I go back to the committee and talk about that, and then come back to you?
I was just curious if that included summer as well. Because I know she's gotta read three books for the senior over the summer.
Which is a lot, though, right?
Well, they're about three-hundred-and-fifty pages piece. That's kind of a lot.
And what is the one, Brian?
The Once and Future King is not, it's Life of Pi. That was Life of Pi is not receiving near the resistance, that Once and Future King.
And Life of Pi is a quick book, too.
I remember personally.
It is a nice change.
Good, good.
Books you have to read in between two fifty and three fifty. It's a lot.
Yeah.
But I just didn't know.
Okay, let me, let me talk specifically about the summer piece.
Okay, we'll talk about it when we do our second read through.
Yep. Okay. So the policy as it stands, minus the summer piece, will be what we'll talk with teachers about upon their return. Okay. So then we move on to school security. And I just want to update you on the, on school resource officers. I've spoken with the police chief a number of times, and currently, there are four resource officers that are being recommended from North Haven, the North Haven Police Force. And I believe those officers are being interviewed by the police commission, which is the body that hires next week. And one of them, one of the four includes our high school resource officer, who has been with the district. That leaves two openings. And the chief had me sit in on interviews, because now they're going to have to go outside for two others. And there were three officers that they interviewed for the two positions. And I think that the hard part will be deciding which one doesn't go. They were all very, very qualified. They were all very interested in the position, have done some really good, good things, and I really was comfortable with every one of them. They really presented it with caring a great deal about kids and wanting to do well. And one of the things we said to them was, you know, this will be sort of a, a build-it while we're going, because it's new to all of us, and, you know, they understood that, and they were comfortable with that. So I think that for the start of the year, the last conversation that I had with the chief, there'll be a full-time officer at the high school, there'll be a full-time officer at the middle school. And then there'll be an officer that goes between two elementary schools until the other two positions are filled. And I'm hoping that those will be filled in September.
He doesn't think he'll fill them before the start of school?
I think the problem is the meeting of the police commission.
Well, maybe we can discuss with them having a, moving up their meeting.
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, I think, I, my feeling is that the S R O officers should be at the school when they start the elementary.
Okay.
So I would, I would hope that they would be able to move up their meeting for that.
I'll reach out to the chief.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question about that? There is training that I've heard about happening, coming from the specter group for the S R Os, that's separate from the board of ed training. That's from the police commission. And my understanding is that the three that have been identified, and the high school officer, actually, I'm not sure about the high school one or not, but the three that have been identified had gone through the six-day training. Are we gonna do the same training for the two?
Yes. The two that are coming. And I was going to mention that training. They, that covered topics, I saw the itinerary. Youth-specific de-escalation, preventing school violence, social media, internet safety, helping youth cope with grief, teen suicide, mental health issues in children with trauma, youth substance abuse, bullying prevention and intervention. I mean, it was a really pretty comprehensive offering, and, yes, the other two officers are going to go for that training. So one of the things that, you know, I'm talking with Patrick about, and we'll need to talk with the police chief about, is I'd like to have, be able to set up a meet and greet for parents as quickly as I can.
That's great.
And so we are working on that, and, you know, hopefully, we will get something in place. That's our goal.
Will they be able to attend open houses?
Yes, I'm gonna ask them to attend open houses, and there are, we're going, that's one of the things we're looking at, is the school calendar, and picking out those things in which we would like them there. I think that they should be there at concerts, when, you know, the community is, they aren't, parents are there. So we are, you know, we will talk with the police chief about that and try to get that all confirmed. So I also received information about their responsibilities, and I wanted to share that with you. So their key responsibilities will be to be visible at all times, to monitor morning and afternoon bus ramps and parent guardian drop-off locations, to monitor visitors to the school, to patrol the exterior perimeter of the school, to patrol the interior of the school, to coach and mentor youth whenever appropriate, which is really about relationship building. And it is very clear that they are not involved in ordinary discipline. That is left to the school to take care of. And as we interviewed the three candidates last week, I mean, that was, that point was driven home with all of them. And we'll make sure that that is the case.
What about their role with regard to other suspected illegal activity that might be going on in the school with regard to students?
Can you give me an example?
Well, I don't know. If they suspect that a student is selling drugs in the bathroom, or if they suspect that a student is, I don't know, just that, those kinds of...
That would, they would, if they identify that, and administration wasn't aware of it, it goes to administration, and there's a whole protocol that they follow. And at some point in that, even without resource officers, police get involved. So I think it would be the same.
But it would be something that would come from administration first.
Exactly.
Administration would have to sanction whatever it is that...
Exactly.
Okay.
I agree, that's what's happening at the high school now, right?
Yes, it is. Yeah. Do you have anything, anything else, any other questions about the responsibilities?
Can I just add, I use so much, especially on the elementary level during recess times?
Yes.
That's when they'll be out, controlling outside.
Actually, one of the things Patrick said to me yesterday was, do they have, do we set them up with a computer, and do we set them up with space? And I said, no, I don't want them to sit. So I want them to be on the go all day long. And I fear that, you know, office and computer and all is more tempting than I'd like it to be. And so...
You could do a whole, you could do a whole math lesson with, like, wear a Fitbit, and then they track how many steps you took, and it's projected. You could do a whole thing with that. Spoken like a teacher.
I'd really like that, in the cafeteria, in recess, or at recess, and during any of the times when the, when the school is sort of down. So, okay. Finally, in terms of school security, we have to have a conversation about students wearing lanyards. You know, we ordered lanyards last year, and we piloted, it was very late in the spring, and we piloted it at the high school. And it was not, the goal was for that to create another level of security. Believe it or not, we received a considerable amount of pushback from students about wearing lanyards. There was a petition that I got. There was a petition that I got. Now, one of the things that going into the pilot that Dr. Dallie and I talked about is we didn't want it to become a disciplinary thing like wearing a baseball cap. You don't have your cap or you have a cap on, go to the office if, you know, a student didn't have their lanyard. But unfortunately, it seems to have swung to the other extreme where they really were not taking it seriously. And I think that if we're going to mandate it, we're just going to need to set some clear boundaries on it. I don't know if Charlotte had any feelings on it. Jen?
She did mention to me once, I asked her about it, and she said that there were kids who said, well, what happens if we don't wear it?
Yeah.
And they were told that they just needed, we're just expecting you to wear it. Like, there wasn't... I was surprised that kids wanted to know, what if we don't at that age?
Right.
But they wanted to know that. But what if they forget it? That's my concern.
Yes.
You know, you go and you leave something on the table. I mean, you're already trying to bring all of the things that you need for the school day. I'm wondering if they should be rather than on their person, maybe attached to the backpack already, so you don't have to worry about putting it on and taking it off every day, but maybe clipping it with a carabiner on your backpack or something that you're going to have anyhow.
They get those identification cards. So, looking at a way of using those as, having those visible all the time.
And they always bring their backpacks everywhere. Nobody uses a locker, really. Yeah, they typically don't. But I'm thinking if you have to remember to put it on every day, I mean, I'm guilty of not wearing my own.
So, our goal for having these lanyards, whether we had the young woman who came to the board and discussed what had happened was after school, there were several students that came into the school who were not North Haven students.
Right.
So, our goal was to have these lanyards for identification purposes. I wonder if, when we did this trial, because it was the end of the year, if that had a lot to do with it.
Was it just seniors?
No, we did it with everybody.
If it started in August, September, when school starts, if there would be something different.
Yeah.
But maybe perhaps if they don't want to wear them, kind of, I don't know, have you seen that? I think some people have it. They're like on their bills or a clip and any, their backpacks or whatever, and then you can pull it out. And if you don't have that on there, because the teachers and the...
Like a hall pass.
Yeah. The teachers, et cetera, for the most part, know who the students are, but there's how many students, almost.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Students in there, so we want to have that identity. I think that's what we have to look at as a reason why and when we did it. So, perhaps what we can do is start it that way in August.
Sorry, what way?
With the lanyards around their neck or on their backpacks and be able to show them at any time during the day. They have to have them available to show them. By the way, my opinion, if a kid loses it or doesn't have, doesn't lose it, but if they don't have it with them, take a picture of it so that they could show, because it'll have their picture on it.
Or...
Or their cell phone.
Cell phones are good for college. For everyone. You brought your party.
Right, right.
I'm having, I have, I don't have a lot of sympathy with people that don't want to wear them.
Right, I just don't want them.
It clashes with your shirt. I mean, come on.
No, but if they forget, they may...
No, if they forget, they could pick up.
But if you clip it to the backpack, they'll always have it, yeah?
I don't... I take pictures when I need to have identification. I have a picture of my passport, I have a picture of different things on my cell phone. They could take that. But we can work around that. And then most of them are not going to be called out to say, show me your ID.
Right.
Because they're known. It's when those kids may come in after school or maybe someone from West Haven High School is picking up their cousin who goes to North Haven and the cousin says, oh, come on inside. That's what I think we're talking about.
I don't have a lot of sympathy for people that don't want to wear them, just because, one, if you go to any college campus, students have their college IDs. You go to Gateway, you can't even get into the parking lot without showing your lanyard. So, this is good training for the future. A lot of people going to business, you know what, you're wearing a T-shirt, you're wearing a lanyard, you're having some kind of ID. So, you know, we're preparing people for their future.
Right.
Now, do I have a problem with somebody who just wants to wear, clip to their side or to the back? No, I don't. I mean, just as long as it's available.
Good.
So that, and again, it was for the idea of being, having a procedure that we could quickly stop someone who was trying to funnel in to the school with a lot of kids and doesn't belong there.
So, do we want it so that it's visible so everyone can see it or just for a kid to be able to produce it? Because if we want to, if we want a kid just to be able to produce it when asked, they make those things that you stick on the back of your phone, you could just slide it in like all the kids use at college. They just have that thing that holds the card.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's something that...
They think it's visible.
Yeah, if you're asked, you can produce it. So, if it's, like Anita said, the best thing is to put on the phone. They take pictures of everything that you have on the phone. So, that's another backup, just in case you forget. But as long as it's accessible, you can bring it out and show and prove your ID.
So, then there's options for them to be able to, because they make those things that stick right on the back of the phone and they have their phones with them all the time, more than the backpack. So...
They could even stick it in the case, too.
Yeah.
In case.
You know, one of the things we're saying is that most, many of the teachers know many of the students, but not all of the teachers know all of the students. And so, it could become kind of cumbersome for a student walking down the hall, sees a face that he or she doesn't recognize and say, I mean, first of all, it's confrontational. Hey, let me see your ID. If the ID is visible, then there's no problem with that.
So, it is visible.
So, I would argue to have it visible. I don't care if it's stuck to your forehead, but I, you know, somehow.
Whether it's on your backpack and you're wearing it or you have one of those things on your belt, I think it should be visible.
So, then there's options.
Even if it's visible, if you're walking past me in a split second, I can know who, I can identify if that picture is yours on your ID.
No, but if you're...
No, but it's...
I have to ask you, I have to approach you and ask you to take a look at it. So, either way, you may have to ask the person.
But you look suspicious to me. Watch him, Billy.
But at the high school, there's teachers that are doing hall duty. They're sitting and they're watching the kid. So, it wouldn't be like a teacher stepping out of the room and saying, hey, you know, you know, that would be up to the, for any of us, people doing the hall duty. And they're seeing kids coming in and out of the classroom, going to the bathroom or whatever.
Does every teacher have to wear their lanyard during the day?
Yes.
Okay. Every student should have to wear their lanyard during the day.
I mean, you would even wear one, don't you, Dr. Corlin?
When you wear it, you can't we go out.
I'm starting, my face is starting to fade.
That was what gave you...
Yes, that's right.
Then we need to come up with some sort of way of consequence, I guess.
Yeah, I think that, here's what I would propose, that we, we talk with, I talk with Dr. Dallie and let him know that we're going to move forward with this. And then the high school needs to determine what the consequence will be and let us know. And I think that we should be prepared to hand them out. They do every class meeting within the first few days of school. They meet with the freshmen, they meet with the sophomore. And I agree with whomever said, it may have been that suddenly it was sprung on them.
Yeah.
That, you know, if this is just, and I think your point is a really good one and something I would ask them to emphasize, Dot, is you're going to have to do this wherever you go. You go to college, you go to work, wherever you go, you need to do this. So, this is just getting you ready for the future.
And to keep them safe.
And to keep them safe, right.
You could do it the way they used to do it, like they caught you chewing gum. If you don't wear your lanyard, the next time you have to wear it on your nose.
On your nose.
But what do you do with sports? This issue came at the end of the school day, so when the kids change into their sports attire and then go outside, they no longer have their lanyards on.
Right.
And they're coming back into the school without their lanyards on. So, how are you addressing that?
I think that that, I think that the coach has to be responsible for who's coming out and who's going in.
If somebody's not a student in North Haven, they're not going to have the drunks and, right? I mean, they're not going to have the proper, probably they're not going to have the...
Practice, you're wearing whatever you're wearing.
Oh, okay.
I would think the coach would know.
Well, I think the coach's responsibility to make sure that students...
Middle school, you can't plug all the leagues. You've just got to plug as many as you can.
There's an issue.
Well, we can talk about that, a different, that's a totally different scenario.
Being escorted in and out together.
Yeah. And just a thought, maybe for the kids that forget until they remember, it's just like a sticker, like you have to wear a visitor's sticker when you go in.
Right, yep.
They won't forget if they have to wear a sticker.
If they have to wear a sticker, they won't forget.
Bright orange.
There you go. Literally.
He's also saying that I wanted to mention, when we talked about this initially, we talked about this at the middle school and the high school. I would advise against the middle school. Because I think that we just, I think we're asking for problems. And I think that developmentally, I'm just not sure it's the right thing. Dot, you have middle school experience, I don't know, I could be off-base on this.
You know, I mean, when you think about for the safety, when you're in high school and somebody's walking in, they're older, you know, are you worried about somebody that's just coming out of fifth grade, walking into sixth grade, doing harm? But I'm not naive to say, you know what, that's not going to happen. I think that having an SRO at the middle school, it makes me, takes kind of some of the worry away. If I was going to do it, if I was going to do it, at least start with the eighth grade to get them prepared to going into the high school.
We had talked about that a little bit last year.
Yeah. That's a very good idea.
You don't think that for middle schoolers who are starting, where they're in middle school, they'll just feel grown up having something like that on it? I don't understand where the problems come with that.
Yeah, I don't either, really. I mean, what causes your concern?
My concern is that they're a real easy toy to flung around with, to grab.
The kids are impulsive, yeah.
And high school kids, you know, we may get some of that at the high school, but they're less inclined to do it.
Plus, there's a lot of six, seven-year-old, their executive functioning skills are not developed, so they're going to be the ones, they're forgetting their lunch. So, they're going to be forgetting their lanyard and their lunch and, you know, so...
What about us, a compromise that we do eighth grade? And we see, we see how that goes. And then if, I mean, if we're successful with that, we may move it down.
Yeah, but you both bring up good points. Yeah, I hadn't thought about that, you know, in that age, when you don't have those executive functions or your impulsive. All that. Okay, you want to do that? Is everyone okay with that, starting with eighth grade?
Okay, perfect. That is everything. Thank you.
Melinda?
Okay, I don't really have much today, just for the CNI group. Our first meeting will be September 4th, which is a Tuesday, because we miss a bunch of Mondays in September. So, that works for you guys.
Well, I'll have to let you know.
Okay.
Because I'm, actually, I'm starting back to school tomorrow, so...
Okay. Keep me posted. If we have to adjust, we will. I need to have it go till too late in September.
Actually, I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I remember. Still in sublimo.
That's okay. And Dr. Corlin had said to mention about the professional development. So, the high school will be doing some work to prepare for the NEASC visit. The middle school is planning some professional development that's appropriate there. And the elementary will be, all the elementary teachers will be at Clintonville. And the focus is really going to be on all of this new technology that we've brought in. So, they will go through two-hour sessions in rotation. One will be around the new elementary report cards that we had talked about. One will be about Chromebooks, how to use those in the classroom, how to use their new laptops. And then the third one is the iReady tool that we use. There is a new interface, a new system, like a new, it just looks different. So, there'll be a module around that. So, we're going to bide two-grade levels together and rotate that.
What date was that?
That is the Tuesday.
Twenty-eighth.
What is the middle school doing?
They're submitting, actually, principals are doing their professional development plans for the year right now. And so, we're waiting for those.
And then we'll kind of check and see if they align.
Then we decide if there are, you know, if we need to look at other things.
I took control of the elementary one with Jen because we have all of these new devices and we just want to make sure that they're rolled out in a really organized fashion, so...
But we will watch for the secondary.
Okay.
Anita?
Oh, dear.
I have an update whenever you...
Oh, on the middle school?
Yes.
Okay. So, we can go back in time before we go into our fin, our finance, monthly financial report. Go ahead.
All right, so we met on Monday and the solo panels should be ready by mid-September. So, they're working on that. The issue that took up most of the time were the gym floors. It's an issue with the gym floor, not a safety issue, more of an aesthetic issue. So, the, the point where they would actually join each other, spread around the gym, is basically opening up and it's more of an aesthetic issue. When we first looked at the gym floor, we spoke to different experts who said that the gym floor, you have to do is kind of like brush it up, resurface it, paint it, and you don't have to change it. But right now, it's not looking like that's working out. So, we're looking at estimates to change it. It's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's what we're looking, it's going to be very expensive. So, they're getting estimates and so it's just something that's hanging out there. We don't know what's going to happen with it, but it's not a safety issue.
Do they replace?
These were the original floors that we had replaced.
Yeah, the slugs that were there, yeah.
Oh, in our school or red?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you said.
Yes, yes, yes. So, yeah, so the thing is, when they came to the gym floors, the question was, do you need to replace it or do you need to just refurbish it? And when they had consulted with different people, they said, you know, you can just clean it up, you know, paint it, spray it, polish it and do all that, you know. But now those things are happening to it and they are concerned about it.
So, aside from aesthetics, in terms of safety, is it a can that can be kicked down the road a little?
It's, yeah, so it is safe for them to play on. So, right now, the committee is not, it depends on what the estimates come back as. I mean, it doesn't seem like they're too excited. That's my read, to actually change, as long as it's a safe environment for the kids to play, you know. So, they're looking at estimates and depend on what, you know, what estimates we get will figure out what to do with it.
Okay, you can, not only that, but if they're going to change that floor, how does that affect PE time?
Exactly. So, it's not, it's something that's going to happen next year, if it's going to happen. It's going to be next year after the, when the school is not in session.
In the summer?
Yeah, in the summer. So, it's a next year project. And then we, there was an issue with the fire marshal about changing the Egress lighting in the, installing Egress lighting in auditorium. That has been...
In the where?
In the auditorium.
Oh, where it's only with that.
Exactly. So, that got fixed. And there was also another issue that was identified with the staircase, the side staircase. They, so the staircase is too wide, so they need like a railing in between because of the number of people that will probably rush in there in case of an emergency. So, they're looking at installing that for the fire marshal. Right now, they are looking at 250, 300,000 balance that's left, but, you know, it's still up in the air because there are a couple of things they need to close out. So, we don't have a date for our next meeting yet. Gary's going to let us know when his next meeting is scheduled.
What is the timeframe for the railing, the banister?
Ah, they're working on it.[1681.91] Ah, they're working on it, they're working on it.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's a fire marshal issue.
Who is to start school, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, oh, so they, he did his, he does his walkthrough through all the schools, so that's, okay. Very good. And Goldie, we'd like to all sing "Congratulations" to the song.
Yeah, he told them on today, so.
Did he? Congratulations.
His name is?
Kemzie.
Nice, nice. Yeah, exciting, future soccer football fan. When I say it on the wall.
That's my retirement.
Okay, Brian.
Finance, we're, now we'll have to go to executive session later on tonight, we can talk about hiring a new business manager. But in the interim, we do have Frank Connolly, who's filling in for us, and he and I are going to speak weekly, and then I'm going to circle back with the town in two weeks, on Wednesday the 22nd. Just make sure we're on track with our receivables, payables, and placing.
Frank is, Frank has had, I've mentioned to you in the email that he was the super, the business manager in Stonington, but he's also done interns in seven other districts. So he's really-
He's good.
He's very, very experienced.
So kind of, he just started this past Monday, so I'm giving him a kind of a week.
And he will be here in October.
Sure.
No, September.
September.
Got this month line going.
Because, and rightly so, we provide all the paper and the pencils for the kids at the beginning of the school year. Did, are we all well-stocked, did all that stuff go out?
Melinda and I go into the business office every day, at different times, to check where they stand on the invoices, yes, everything is out.
Okay, good.
And they get tired of seeing us, but that's all right.
I'm surprised you're not going down to W.P. Mason and filling up your car.
Oh, I know. I've said that to them, you know, we have, we have made a point of saying, parents are not providing things, and don't, you put us in that position, so.
And it's a wonderful thing that we do, and when I talk to other districts and tell them that we do that, they, they're absolutely amazed.
Well, Randy was saying yesterday in her district.
I get my own pencils and paper.
Yeah.
Me too.
Our own money, right, your own money.
Oh, my own money.
You go to Target and Walmart and buy everything for my class.
Double and board paper, we don't have any, have to go buy it, or buy something to cover the wall.
Markers, colored pencils.
Crayons.
Everything.
That work.
I don't know, my school, we get $100 a year.
We don't get anything.
And $100 is used up on just name tags and stuff like, you know, for the desk and things like that. So it's amazing what we do here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
So that's because of you, and I thank you for that.
How you felt about it, which is-
Right.
Right, you felt that parents should not have to pay for the public education.
Yeah, it bothers me that those, those lists that went out, and all of that is wrong.
Okay, public comment?
Mary White-Samalane, so I'd like to first start off by saying thank, thank you to all of you for your diligence regarding the turf field temperature taking and working on getting a policy in place, because you can see by the small sample that they definitely get pretty hot. And just for some clarification, the Connecticut coach that we refer to once in a while, I have the, I have CBS News report right here on that, covered that story, and it was Stratford. And basically, we know what happened was, as a reminder, he, the coach was not, this was in September of 2015, so it wasn't even August, and he wasn't pleased with their practice performance, and so he punished them and had them do those spider-like crawls from one end of the turf field to the other, and it caused the skin to burn off their hands. And at least 16 players were injured. But what I wanted to say about that is that the air temperature on that day in September 2015 was in the 90s. And they said that the turf field temperature, I guess, had been taken that day before noon, and it was 130 degrees. So just wanted to say that. And I do have some additional information, just to add to what Dr. Cronin stated about the SRO training. So I wanted to share with you what I had found. So I, after weeks of message, leaving messages and telephone tag, I was finally able to get in touch with the woman who's in charge of the Yale Child Study Center and the Trauma Center. Their program is not for us. Their training is for entire police departments, and the training that they offer is geared toward officers responding to acute scenes where children are exposed to domestic violence and neighborhood violence. And just to reiterate, the North Haven SROs, they will be certified police officers. And the additional training that they will receive, when completed, they will be certified SROs. And, let's see, so I spoke with Chief McLaughlin, and he was kind enough to give me some specifics. So as mentioned, the SROs will receive the SRO certification training by the Specter Group. The training is being prepared by Attorney Elliot Specter and his Training Foundation. Mr. Specter is a POSTC, which stands for Police Officer Standards Training Council, Certified Instructor, and he has provided training to police officers throughout Connecticut for many, many years. The officers that went through the SRO certification program that took place on July 25th, 26th, 27th, and August 6th, 7th, and 8th, and the host was the Middletown Police Department. And so in the course of doing the research, I spoke with Connecticut State Trooper Kate Cummings. She is a DARE officer and also a SRO. She spoke of the Specter Group SRO certification program, and she recommended it. She actually was a guest speaker regarding internet safety to the Specter Group participants. She had previously spoken in Durham on April 24th to a dozen members of the public on School Resource Officers, as the Regional School District 13 Board of Education considers hiring one. You can listen to Trooper, Trooper Cummings' presentation by going to the North Haven Citizens' Facebook page, scroll to June 27, click on the North Haven SRO story, and then scroll to the link after Trooper Cummings' name. It is a very good presentation, I highly recommend it. A few things of interest that I recall are Trooper Cummings has an Instagram and has 5,000 followers. So I don't know if the SRO in the high school has an Instagram, but she definitely recommends it. So anyway, so she described when a student had a seizure in the cafeteria. 18 students took out their phones, recorded it, and posted it to social media. Trooper Cummings called them all in and decided to use the incident for teaching. All students were given the option to participate in a teaching Instagram story to be posted to her page, or receive appropriate discipline. All parents signed the permission forms. All students apologized and chose to participate. Another example Trooper Cummings gave in her talk was in the elementary school, when she became aware of two fourth-grade students sexting. It was shocking to all because of the students' young ages. She brought everyone in, including parents. Kids just don't understand, once you post those photos, they're always there. So getting back to North Haven's SRO training, the SROs will be attending a one-day training seminar relative to school violence that is being hosted by the FBI. Instructors for this training will be special agents assigned to their behavioral, Behavior Analyst Analysis Unit, BAU. And just to reiterate, the SRO's primary duty will be providing school security and protecting the students and school staff from internal and external threats. The school's administration, teachers, and social workers will handle most all other matters. The presence of a SRO at the schools will not lead to an extended police role in the educational process. The police role is security, and the principals and teachers' roles are education. And that's it. Oh, I actually have a copy of the syllabus for you guys. If you'd like to see what they, what they had. Their intense training there. Be serious. And the last thing I had wanted to say is that as far as the IDs, I definitely think that they should be used, and I applaud the students for doing the petition and things like that, but they're not seeing the big picture. And I was just thinking, when you were talking about, this is the way the world is when they graduate from high school, who's our son, he's the senior at Bryant, and that ID, that is their key to get into all the buildings, even to get into the cafeteria. And, and everything is loaded on there, too, as far as like their meals, and it's just amazing, all the information that's on there. And they have to have it, without that ID, phew, he can't do anything, go anywhere, so it's good to get them used to it, plus, you know, for safety, security.
Thank you, Mary, thank you. Any other public comment? Our next is future agenda item, and in September, we'll talk about changing the date for the October Board of Ed meeting from October, wait, I can't have a count, 11th to the 16th. So we'll put that on the agenda for that time, but just if you all want to make a note of that. I'll be away on the 11th, and Joe Erardi wants to speak to us, the board, that night at our October board meeting, so I'd like to change it to the 16th. We're just telling everyone now, we'll talk about it on the, in September. Okay, the board does have to go into executive session this evening, so may I have a moment to enter into executive session, to discuss matters for changing to the next one. Please, thank you.